First, I would like to open it up for directions from our translator. Thank you.
Yes, good evening everyone. I'll give the instructions in Spanish. Buenas noches a todos. Seulite les utilizará la función de interpretación de Zoom para soporte en inglés y español. Todos los participantes de esta llamada deben seleccionar su idioma de preferencia siendo clic en el idioma correspondiente. Cuando el anfitrión active la función de interpretación, dicha función se encuentra en el panel de herramientas en el icono del globo teráqueo. El modo de interpretación para esta reunión será el simultáneo. Gracias por su atención y colaboración.
Thank you. Seeing that all board members are present except for President Kubas Glenrich who's on her way, we're gonna begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're onto item 1C which is living land acknowledgement. It's a brief acknowledgement of land and life. The Sunnydaw school district is located on the ancestral and unceded land of the Moetma Oloni tribe who have peacefully honored and cared for this land for thousands of years. We recognize that every member of the Sunnydaw community continues to benefit from the use and occupation of this land. We acknowledge our responsibility to learn from the wisdom of the Oloni people and to consider how we might work to repair injustices and to move forward together in honorable ways. We're onto item 2, approval of the agenda. Do we public comment before we approve it?
Yeah.
We do, right? Okay, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on the approval of the agenda only? Oh, and if you're arriving, if you have something to... You can fill out a speaker card. The agenda numbers are there and Mr. Romero on the back can help you. Okay, seeing none of board, do I have a motion?
I vote for the agenda as opposed. I will sign.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.
I vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's vote. Sorry. Let's keep going. Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. And the motion passes. The agenda is approved. We are on to item 3 which is public comment on closed session items. So for public comment on closed session items, time limits are allocated as 3 minutes per person and 20 minutes for public comment. Speakers are asked to give their name and affiliation so that an accurate record is reflected in the minutes. If there's Spanish translation, additional time will be given. Is there public comment on closed session items? I think we have one in the room.
Yes, it's about the...
Expulsion?
I was not here. About expulsion, yes.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we're here.
Okay, are there any online as well, please?
There's none.
Is there one or two?
One or two speakers?
When is that available?
Well. Okay.
Open. Two speakers? Okay. I'm gonna translate for that.
Okay.
Okay, let's start.
We're ready when you are.
This is a call session.
She's commenting on the question.
She's commenting on closed session item here.
Before we go into closed session. No, no, no. I don't know. Or they want it to be in here in closed session.
No, no, no.
So, you'll translate. We have a simultaneous translation online but for us, if you'd like to translate, that would be good.
Yes, I'll translate. I'll do it in fragments
Sure.
because otherwise you're not gonna hear me.
Sure. You'll have 6 minutes for each, so.
Ah, buenas tardes. Yo vengo porque quiero hacer más como una petición para... Para la escuela Colombia que es donde mi hijo tuvo el incidente. Necesitamos más supervisión en los baños, en los pasillos y para que no le pase lo mismo que le pasó a mi familia.
Hello, good afternoon. I would like to make a petition for Colombia. We need more personal and safety and supervision in the bathrooms and the hallways because I don't want what happened to my kid to happen to another kid.
A mi familia le afectó mucho. Principalmente a mí me afectó porque estaba pensando yo siempre que a mi hijo le apuntaron con una navaja y pensé yo que en cualquier momento lo iban a herir y...
So, my family was really affected by it and mainly I was always thinking that... It affected me greatly because I was thinking that my son could have been hurt.
A mi hijo le afectó porque él siempre se quería ir al parque a jugar con sus amigos. Entonces ahorita en este momento yo no lo estoy dejando salir al parque porque tengo esa preocupación, ese miedo de que en cualquier momento lo vayan... le vaya a ser afectado porque los amigos de las personas que lo...
I'm really worried. It really also affected my kid, my child greatly because I don't let him go out to the park or anything. I'm afraid that the people that did that will do something to him. And I don't let him go. And if he goes out, I have to go out with him because I'm thinking that he's gonna be hurt. Because the friends of the kids, the muggins.
A mi hija también estuvo afectada. Mi hija todavía va a estar en el séptimo grado en la Colombia y tengo preocupación también por ella. Por eso es que yo vengo a hacer esta petición que haya más seguridad en los baños. Y a mi hija le afectó porque una de sus compañeras le dijeron que iban a matar a su hermano. Entonces ese día mi hija llegó muy triste llorando y desde ese momento ella también está pensando en regresar a la escuela y qué es lo que va a pasar. Eh, mi...
So, my daughter was really affected because some kids told her they were gonna kill her brother and she got home crying. And she's really nervous to go back to school.
Eh, mi hija la menor también escuchó el comentario y me pregunta. Entonces está afectada. Mi esposo a que presente me ha estado apoyando porque no podemos salir con... dejar a mi hijo solo que salga. Lo acompaña él o lo acompaño yo.
My youngest daughter was also affected because she heard the comment. And my husband and me, we can't let him go out alone. So, my husband is helping me with this. And I'm sorry, I'm translating partially verbally and partially what she wrote which is a little bit different. But my whole family has been affected in different ways. So, I don't think my daughter is fully... It's really safe going back to Colombia.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to speak to that too.
Wait, we're gonna reset the timer. We have 3 minutes.
Okay, I'll be sure. This, I mean this shooting had happened. The day before that happened, there was something happened with the kids. And they were reported. The kids went back. There was nothing done. Or I don't know. We don't know. Privacy issues, I know. So, this shouldn't have happened. Could have been prevented and it wasn't. And after, it wasn't prevented. I think it could have been handled better. They didn't have to find out the way she found out. And then after that, after handling not well that day, it wasn't handled well for the whole remainder of the school. So, kids are not safe completely in there because I feel the kids are not safe. I'm afraid for my kids going in because I don't know if this will happen. There are some kids that were friends with this voice. They're still in there. I just, I think it should have been handled better and should be more people watching over. Passing in hallways, it has become an issue. Some kids get pushed. There has been bullying throughout the year. And someone on the playground should be watching besides the bathrooms. I think it's really important to handle this swiftly and efficiently and not leave space for, "Oh, maybe we'll do this." No, you have to have a plan in place because this happened and I know you couldn't foresee this but those kids were problematic already. So, I think that you should foresee what can be foreseen. So, and plan for it. It has to have a plan in writing and we have to make sure our kids will be safe when we go back to school. So, either cameras, more people, a combination of those things. And when there are problematic kids in there, make sure they have an adult eye on them so this kind of thing doesn't happen. There's tiny kids coming from Sunnydaw and from other schools as well, I'm assuming. And 8 years are big. So, I don't know if it's a few or one or two but I know about 2 kids. They have gone out of Colombia and homeschooling because of the bullying happening. So, I think it has to be handled better and quicker. So, just came for that. So, I'm hoping you guys come up with a plan before we start school.
Thanks, officer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let me hand it back over to President Kubas Glenrich. Thank you. And you, come on. Okay. Thank you. So, from that, we have a public comment. We already had that. Now, we're gonna commit to closed session and in consideration of students' expulsion educational code for 8918C and we're gonna have 2 cases. So, they will be back in about an hour or less.
Thanks for coming.
Well, these things are bigger, huh?
What are you looking for?
I'm breaking all the rules right now. The... It got pushed this way during the admin meeting, it seems, to fit them all in. And so, now people are like... Like if I'm sitting in this chair, you can't get by them. For the most part.
Keep them in.
Yeah. Watch your fingers. Watch your fingers. I have to separate first.
Push that one down. A little bit more. We can go away that? Way far out there?
I guess that's a little bit. It was really just the size because they got space in the middle.
Back to where I had it. We can get one. Yeah, put that one back. Make that one flush with the other one.
Yeah.
I got it. I got it. Watch your fingers. Once we put that, then hold this. Then you can move that one.
So just real quickly about summer school, you mentioned that two of the board members from Fremont attended. Also Superintendent Clark attended. He visited Bishop and Columbia Middle School, which is fantastic. And in fact, I was just talking to him on the way into the meeting today and he commented on how appreciative he was of the programs that we offered. And I think it's good. I think the collaboration is good. So we're really pleased with that. About the ribbon cutting today, there's nothing I can add except just a great big thank you to Aleah because Aleah put it all together. A wonderful program. She was responsible for getting everyone there and then getting, what was that, 180 people there? It was like a lot of people and it was really great. What a joyful, joyful event. Just to remind everyone that the parcel tax that we put on the ballot, we should get our letter assigned either tomorrow or Monday. So I think last time for the bond, it was like on the Friday, like late. It might be that this is a bigger election, so maybe it would push it to Monday, but it'll be very soon. So we should hear about that soon. Let's see. Lakewood Library and Learning Center, the groundbreaking is September 5th at 3 o'clock. And then I just always want to remind everyone that it's a real partnership between the school district and the city that is on our property. Sometimes people forget that. That's our property. That was our pool, which is odd. We didn't need a pool. But we can use the library better and there'll be two community rooms in that. One for the high school district that they made a significant contribution to and one from our district that we made a significant contribution for. And they're adjacent to each other, so that's going to be exciting. So the groundbreaking is scheduled for September 5th at 3 o'clock. So that's great. And of course, that's in Lakewood. We're getting started. We had our management retreat. We have all kinds of things going on tomorrow morning in this very room. The new teacher orientation, which is exciting. Back to school assembly is next Wednesday. And just one other thing I wanted to make a comment, I suppose, for the board and for the public. You'll start to notice that on our agenda here and then even our other internal agendas, we are starting to tie elements of our strategic plan to the items. So we did that in our instructional leadership team with principals on Tuesday. We asked the principals to do it where they can in their schools and so we're going to get better at that. But I think it's really important that we keep our strategic plan vibrant. And very soon up on the wall where the old documents used to be, there will be our new strategic plan posters. Because we're preparing those for everyone in the district and we'll get bigger ones right here too. So that's all I have.
I forgot to say one thing. Can I say one more thing? On September 17th from 4 to 6 p.m., we're going to have our parcel tax kickoff. A little fundraiser in Washington Park right over here. You can sign up for a block walk. And so the parcel tax walk will be on the 28th, 21st of, right after 23rd, 28th?
28th.
28th of September.
28th.
Yes. Thank you. And that is the 28th of September. So save the date. Get your tennies. We send that out to our personal emails. That info, send that out to our personal emails.
Yeah, it's just the information though that that's happening. You can say that.
Okay. So with that, oh, by the way, I
I know that probably took extra work, but um great to have a great turnout. Um I'm working really hard to be less grumpy. Most of we're excited to start a school year, right? But I love summertime, I love having my kids home. And I'm working really hard to be less grumpy this year about the start of school year. Um and it's super weird having my oldest be a senior, so. Anyway. Uh getting way better, less grumpy was totally, totally good. Um the right one, I'm almost straight, I mean it hurts to go that straight, but. I'm not at full recovery, but I've made tons of progress from one last time, you guys, so thanks for asking.
I just wanna echo what everyone else said about the great event today. Congratulations to Ellis, you guys have a school and it is a beautiful campus. Um that was a really great event, it was great to see everyone, especially uh right now before the school year starts and just reconnect a little bit again. Um I've been traveling, we just got back, um. Gosh, we just got back last night, what if I'm doing awake, I don't, I don't know. We just got back last night, yeah, we just got back last night and I'm, I'm, I personally am still rebooting from vacation mode, but uh. It's great, uh I'm really looking forward to the start of this new school year, I am a little bit like, I don't wanna say grumpy, but uh. Auntie, I guess, my son is starting at a new school this year, he's moving from Lakewood to Fairwood and it's just. A lot of, a lot of change, it's gonna be very exciting, I am excited, Auntie, a little bit nervous and it's, but I know that. Our, our, our teachers and our staff are, are prepared and they're getting ready and. It's gonna be very exciting, it's gonna be great year.
So um I sent my packet comments in, again, of course, thank you for Ellis, but also I really enjoyed the management retreat this year and um. Loved the summer school tours, I really appreciated that, being invited to the expos. Um some of the high school district trustees attended with us this year, which was different and um. And that was great, uh they got to kinda see what was. Um going on with the Stanford program and um all the work we were doing around inclusion, so they were very excited about all of that. Um and so was I, and then uh the only other thing I wanted to highlight was um. Had a great conference with CLSBA, we're gonna prepare the, like get all the slides together. And give you a summary at the governance team meeting. And um if you have any questions, we can talk about it then, we'll, we'll agendize it. And uh, oh last but not least, SCCSBA um formed a committee at the end of the year around unhoused students advocacy countywide. And um so that would be like working with the county um board of supervisors, um the health offices and. Also, you know, issues around supporting McKinney-Bento students, our definition's a little different than theirs, but. It's great because more people are talking and connecting and um trying to support the growing number of McKinney-Bento students countywide. And the county office of education is completely involved.
Good, so it was a very busy summer, eh I'm glad we're back, possible. Eh we even right after the school uh district ended, there were a lot of activities here and there for June and then we. I was off eh for all July, eh just came back, so I go, go to the CLSBA. A conference which was great, it was, there was a lot of very interesting. Eh content there eh, we had content about security, eh I think I, I shared before with Jeremy eh because I think there were some vendors that were. Also at CalSA in February eh were still there eh about security system inside the school and, and things eh. Very relevant to us, there was a lot about eh how to use AI as a tool for equity. And that was also great eh and how to use eh how to make teachers' life easier with AI and eh make it more efficient. So there was a lot of topics that eh were, I suppose we can bundle in things that are new and are happening. Eh and other things that were, you know, are always good and eternal eh to have another look. Eh I will be talking more about that eh a little bit eh on the next governance meeting. Eh today was eh yes eh great quarter there eh for the opening of our new school, that was amazing. Eh we've been also opening the new committees at the county level for CSBA, one of them as eh pre-mentioned. We've been working with eh a, a way to work with the McKinney-Bento kids and the eh. And their house cooperative coming together with that eh and yeah, still a lot of eh work. Except for July that I was traveling eh, so I, this is the first time, I think since I started that I didn't visit summer school. Which I've been seeing the evolution from eh full pandemic to partial pandemic to now we're doing okay, so I was gonna see how we're doing this year. Eh but yes eh I'll, I'll hear more about it. So yeah, preparing and ready for the new year.
So just real quickly about um summer school, you mentioned that two of the board members from Fremont attended, also superintendent Clark attended. Um he visited Bishop and Columbia Middle School, which is fantastic. And in fact, I was just talking to him on the way into the meeting today and he commented on how appreciative he was of the programs that we offered and um. And I think it's good, I think the collaboration um is good, so um we're really pleased with that. Uh about the ribbon cutting today, I, there's nothing I can add except just a great big thank you to Aleah, because Aleah put it all together. A wonderful program, she was responsible for getting everyone there and then getting, what was that, a hundred and eighty people there, it was like a lot of people. And it was really great, what a joyful, joyful event. Just to remind everyone that the parcel tax that we put on the, on the ballot, um we should get our letter assigned either tomorrow or Monday, so. I think last time for the bond, it was like on the Friday, like late. It might be that this is a bigger election, so maybe it would push it to Monday, but it'll be very soon, um so we should hear about that soon. Let's see, Lakewood Library and Learning Center, the groundbreaking is September 5th at three o'clock. And then I just always wanna remind everyone, that is a real partnership between the school district and the city that is on our property. Sometimes people forget that, that's our property, that was our pool, which is odd, we didn't need a pool. But we can use the library better and there'll be um two community rooms in that. Uh one for the high school district that they made a significant contribution to, um and one from our district that we made a significant contribution for. Um and they're adjacent to each other, so that's gonna be exciting, so the groundbreaking is scheduled for September 5th at three o'clock. So that's great, and of course, that's in Lakewood. We're getting started, we had our management retreat, we have all kinds of things going on, tomorrow morning in this very room, the new teacher orientation, which is exciting. Back to school assembly is next Wednesday. And just one other thing, I wanted to make a comment, I suppose, for the board and for the public, you'll start to notice that. On our agenda here and then even our other internal agendas, we are starting to, to tie elements of our strategic plan to the items. So we did that in our instructional leadership team with principals on Tuesday. We asked the principals to do it where they can, um in their schools, um and so we're gonna get better at that. But I think it's really important that we keep our um strategic plan, plan vibrant and very soon up on the wall where the old documents used to be. There will be our new strategic plan posters, because we're preparing those for everyone in the district and we'll get bigger ones right here too, so that's all I have.
I forgot to say one thing, can I say one more thing? On um September 17th from four to six PM, we're gonna have our parcel tax kickoff. A little fundraiser in Washington Park right over here, you can sign up for a block walk and um. So and the parcel tax walk will be on the twenty eighth, twenty, uh oh, right after twenty third, twenty eighth?
Twenty.
Twenty eighth? Twenty eighth of September.
Twenty eighth.
Yes, thank you, that is the twenty eighth.
Just ask Peggy, Peggy does this.
Just, yeah. Uh so the twenty eighth of September, so save the date, get your tennies. You send that out to our personal emails. That info, send that out to our personal emails.
Yeah, it's just the information though, that that's happening, yeah, you can say that.
Okay, so with that eh, oh by the way eh. I saw their district that every time they start um a slideshow eh everywhere in administration, they put their core beliefs or their. Eh the student portrait, so like the first one will also be something about strategic plan and then they talk about whatever they're gonna talk about.
Yeah, that or the promise, or some element of it, right, yeah, I like that, that's good.
Yes, some element, yeah. My notes from the. We'll see, that is all, okay. Okay, so with that, we move to the next item, which is item eight, comments from the California school.
Sorry, seven.
I have numbers, seven.
Oh, because I'm looking at online.
Seven is SEA.
Oh yes, sorry, that's true. Seven eh comments from the Sunnyvale Education Association, that's true, sorry about that. We have, okay, and eh we welcome you, thank you for being here. Wendy Smith, hi Wendy, yeah.
Hi Wendy, hi.
Hi everyone, um my name is Wendy Smith and I am president of SEA. On behalf of SEA members, I wanna express our excitement and looking forward to this new school year. Many teachers have already been busy preparing their classrooms and creating a welcoming environment for their students. I wanna share that teachers hope to see you more often this school year in person at all our school sites. This invite is not only for board members, but for you district leaders as well. As decision makers, you play a crucial role in shaping the policies and practices that impact our educational environment. However, to make these, the most informed decisions, it's essential to have a firsthand understanding of what is happening in our classrooms. Your presence in the schools shows your commitment to the educational process. And your willingness to engage with the realities of teaching and learning. This can be highly motivating for teachers and reassuring for parents and students. It's hard to steer the ship while sitting on the dock, so we really hope to see you out at our school sites this year. Thank you and let's have a great start to a new school year.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. And next item is item eight eh comments from the California School Employees Association, if there is any member who wish to talk, please raise your hand. Okay, since we seen none, then we're gonna move to the next item, which is comments from the public. This portion of the agenda provides an opportunity for the members of the public to directly address the governing board of any item of interest to the public. However, provision of the Brown Act Government Code five four nine five four point two. And three, prelude any action being taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. And the time limits allocated for testimony are three minutes per person and twenty minutes for public comments in general. Speakers are asked to give their name and affiliation so that an accurate record is eh reflected in the meetings. Is there any comment from the public at this moment? Okay, we have one comment online.
Um there's no name, it's just I hope, so I'm not sure who it is.
Okay eh welcome guests, please start by telling your eh name and affiliation and then eh we're gonna start a counter, thank you.
Hi, yep, sorry, can't change my name on there, but uh my name's Rebecca. And I have two students at San, well, actually just one student now in San Miguel, one's going to Columbia Middle School. And I'm here again tonight to talk about after-school childcare and the affordability and the quality and the lack of it. Um at the school district, it's very much geared toward a certain demographic and I'm not saying that that is the. Incorrect or not the demographic to prioritize, however, there are a lot of families that are still left without any options for after-school childcare. In the Bay Area, most parents have to work, some of us have single family or single-parent households. Um and we've talked about this issue quite often, it seems like there's a little bit of progress. But we're still on the waitlist for San Miguel for the KLAS program, um as well as some other families. And school starts in two weeks and we have no options. Um so it's going to be very difficult, it's been a very stressful summer for us in trying to sort this out. And um just wanna kinda reiterate that we're hoping that this becomes an agenda item at some future board meeting to have a real robust conversation about what that looks like. I think many of the parents have expressed, I mean it's, our hands are tied to the school day ends before the workday. And that's out of our control, um I don't know, you know, what other policies need to be kind of addressed, but many other school districts, I'll reiterate it again. Many other school districts in the Bay Area have come up with solutions for that gap of when school ends and when the parent workday ends. And so again, I feel like there's a lot of options, it's been really kind of, you know, difficult to bring those all to the table. But um yeah, I'd just like that to, to come forward so we can have a bigger discussion about that. And as well as many of the other parents that can't be here tonight, thank you.
Thank you, any comment from eh people here, no? Okay, any, any more comments, I think we already checked one, okay, thank you. And with that eh we move to the next portion eh review and discussion eh. Okay, review and discussion, oh wait.
It's on charter school oversight.
Okay, we start the first ten A is eh charter school oversight and for that eh we're gonna be listening to Dr. Gallagher.
So as you know, we have no charter schools that we sponsor. However, um CSBA recommended that, this is one of their recommended updates. And there've been a lot of changes um in charter, charter school law and governance um since we last updated this policy, so. That's basically what this, there, there's actually a whole list of things that were changed in it, but in a, in a nutshell, that's what this is, is to catch us up with the law. Um should we ever um choose to sponsor charter school.
Um okay eh before we start eh if there is any comment from the public related to this particular item, please raise your hand now, this is item ten A. Okay, since we seen on eh board eh let's open the discussion on this item eh ten A. Any questions, comments regarding this? Okay, eh perfect, the ones that we had before, they have been sponsored by the counties, so this oversight is only if we sponsor one.
It's only if we were to sponsor one.
Okay, but when they are by the county.
They would have their, a similar policy.
But they, oh, they have the oversight notice.
They would have the oversight.
Okay. Well eh. Ten B is the review and discuss policy one one three, no, one 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 three, district and school websites. And for that, we have our communication coordinator, I thought it was director eh Aleah Wilson.
Thank you, um so this policy um was just an update from uh CSBA for outdated materials. I just might be not close enough. Oh, it was not, sorry, hello, Aleah Wilson, communications coordinator. Um this policy um was updated by CSBA, um so we reviewed our policy and our administrative um regulation, um and this is just right here, review.
Okay, so before we start eh if there is any comment from the public referring to this particular item ten B, please raise your hand now. Okay, since seen no, none of them, please board if you have any comments referring to these or questions. Thank you, by the way, for eh checking on this, pretty welcome this. Okay, I think eh we, we are ready to put it on the, on the approval consent agenda next time. Everybody to agree with that? Perfect, okay eh with that, we move to ten C. Review and discuss board policy twelve sixty eh about educational foundation. Eh for that, we have Dr. Gallagher, he'll tell you more about it.
Thank you, this is another recommended um update from CSBA, um kind of two areas, a piece of it. Is to make sure that we comply with the regulations of Prop 28, which basically says that we um. Funding for Prop 28 can only add to programming, it can't supply, um so that references in there. There's also some updates regarding um the way we would work with the Ed Foundation about student records, which probably hasn't been an issue before. But it's good to keep us legal, um and then I should also notice that um, thank you Michelle for letting us know that um, that Michelle, not this Michelle. It's the Sunnyvale Education Foundation, not Educational Foundation, so uh when we bring it back on consent, we'll make that um edit to make sure that we're properly reflecting. The name of the organization, that is so important to us.
Yeah, perfect, thank you, so we are not gonna put it on the agenda, but we can still have comments today?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean it's on the agenda, we're not gonna, we're not gonna move into the consent agenda yet because it needs to come back, but eh please eh any comments regarding this particular item, please raise your hand.
Why can't it go on consent?
It will go on consent.
Oh, it will go directly in consent?
But you're gonna ask for comments first from the public, before we decide that.
Yes. Oh, okay, yeah, because they need to change the name educational to education before we.
Right, right. Yeah, but you said, we said before, but on the consent, it's also gonna.
Okay, we can just go with it.
Yeah, cuz it's.
Okay, we don't need to discuss it yet, perfect, so please, any comments from the public referring to these particular item?
I'm dying to hear from Michelle.
Hello, Michelle Eugenie, president of the Sunnyvale Education Foundation.
Oh yes, turn it back off, I'm trying to translate it.
I'm just loud. Hello?
Not a button.
It's not a button? Thank you. Hello, Michelle Eugenie, president of the Sunnyvale Education Foundation, uh we appreciate the solidification of the, of the relationship between our organization that supports. And enjoys supporting all the students in the Sunnyvale School District with an equity lens. And I very much appreciate the correction of the name, I paid for the Sunnyvale Educational Foundation to get the credit. And uh we just wanted to share feedback that uh while the language is fine, it, it emphasizes equity at the schools. Where we feel like the equity needs to be at the student level. And so we just wanted to bring that to your attention, that we serve our students equitably, um because the schools are each very different. And um we don't want this to come across as, oh, every, every school is gonna get the exact same amount. Or that there's gonna be some per-student kind of allocation that happens as a result of this. Uh I don't think that that's going to happen in the brodage that's here, but I did wanna draw attention to it in case there was refinement down the road if we learn that it's creating any issues. And um thank you very much.
Thank you.
What I can do is that I can go back through the language and see if there's something that I can do to that, cuz we agree with that, see if there's something I can adjust.
I figured, yeah, I thought it was all in the same spirit, I just wanted, we just wanted to draw attention to it in case um others might misinterpret or differently interpret.
Thank you, eh with that, we open the board eh comments and yeah, thank you from me here, we're very excited about this. And eh yeah, you want us to start that, there is a passage that eh they think that it might be, might control, I think we wanted to say equitable in a good way, but it might have a different sense.
I'm trying to find it, I'll find it.
So here's an example one, as I'm going through it, so like there's a line that's on the first page, last line. Says the board supports foundation allocation that serves all district schools equitably, and it could read something like that serves all district students equitably. And so Michelle, is that kinda what you're getting at for Gina, so I would just say.
That, that's pretty.
Yes, so.
No, so the, like the sample, like, like one example, the board supports foundation allocations that serve all district schools equitably. Change it to say all district students equitably, that's an example, right?
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Yes, you were there.
That's easy.
I have a lighter question, so the policy as it currently is, is called educational foundation, do we need to change that?
I will look at the um CSBA manual, sometimes it creates a problem if you change the title of it, like you can't find it.
An educational foundation, it's not the title of our foundation, it's just saying an educational foundation.
But within the.
It's, it's generic and not.
Within the document where we refer to.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that makes sense, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I can correct that.
Thank you.
So I have a question, um you know, it says in the description that this is regarding the um. The new proposition and the, that this is a supplemental instead of a replacement of funding, but when I read through this, that wasn't like.
I have that same confusion.
It wasn't really what it was about and I, it just, it seems like if it is attached to that, it's just. The idea that the Ed Foundation can raise voluntary, the district can accept voluntary donations like to supplement. Our programs, but it didn't, like it didn't scream at me that that's what exactly what it was.
So I guess maybe the comment would be like in the, in the consent agenda one, out of the first paragraph, be more about the Ed Foundation unless it's Prop 28.
Oh, in the, in the, in the cover letter.
To match what, to match what the board policy is.
Okay.
Is that kinda what you're saying?
Yeah, it doesn't seem, because even though the spirit of it might be there, because just having an educational foundation is sort of like saying. You're supplementing your programs in some way, it doesn't seem like that's what.
The bulk of it was not about Prop 28, the bulk of it was just our partnership with our foundation, yeah, yeah, I have the same.
Right. Right. Not even the update, just the whole thing. Okay, that was me.
So with that, I suppose eh we'll bring it back when you change the language, so we can read it before we.
Yep.
Maybe like for approval of that and not instead of a, instead of consent, so we can talk about.
I'll bring it.
Well, do we not wanna unconsent once those changes.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And you can always pull it if there's an issue.
People.
I can just put it on consent, those are very minor changes, and then if, if someone tells me they wanna pull it, we can pull it.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Alright.
It's always nice to talk about the foundation.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Good, so with that eh we can do that and then go to the next item, which will be ten D. Review and discussion of policy to one-to-one superintendent's contract, eh Dr. Gallagher.
It's a little awkward, um but this language is again straight from CSBA, so the policy was updated to delete a portion of the language. Related to limitations for discussing superintendent's salary or other compensation in closed session, as this material exists in other policies. Um additionally, policy was updated to reflect the new law prohibiting the governing board from taking action to terminate a superintendent under specified conditions.
Okay eh first, we're gonna start with questions from the public, if we have any comments, questions regarding this item, ten D, please raise your hand now.
None.
Okay, since we have none, then we move to the board, board, do you have any comments, questions regarding this? Okay, then eh.
So my comment is, it's not for this board, the update is the policy, it's just to try and promote civility and. Consistent expectations throughout the state of what appropriate behaviors are.
Right.
Okay, good, with that, this can be moved to the consent agenda and then eh we'll go to the next item, which is ten E. Eh review and discuss board by law nine two two three filling vacancies. And eh with that, we have Dr. Gallagher.
Yeah, this is another one that um, kind of two things prompted this, one was the CSBA update. And then also um we wanted this, our policy, that the CSBA always gives you choices. And since we have by trustee areas, we updated the language to reflect the fact that we have trustee areas. However, still for a few more months, we, um there are two areas that are, or two trustees that are elected at large, still for a couple more months. So what I would recommend is, um if you decide to put this on consent, that we bring it back um for approval um on consent um in December. So once all the trustee areas are trustee areas and no one else is um at large, if that makes sense.
But I would, I would like to, oh, we're due a public address?
Yes.
Perfect.
So eh if we have any comments now from the public, this is ten E, eh please raise your hand now. Okay, since we don't have any, then we're opening this for discussion from the board, you wanna start?
Yeah, I would like to, when we bring it back, if we could just have it for discussion or be. or if we feel like it's pretty close to bring it back for approval. Um, because of the language in it as far as, um, inhabiting, residing, duration, understanding more like what the rules are around it, just to have a discussion about it, just to be more clear, especially cuz we'll be, at that time, we'll be having new board members come on, maybe even future board members coming on. So I think it would be, rather than putting it on consent, I'm, I'm happy to table it until another meeting, but I, I would wanna talk about the onboarding of new people, especially since we would be maybe filling a vacancy then.
So we could do, we could do it on review and action if you felt comfortable generally with the language,
Yeah, something like that.
but you wanna make sure that there's opportunity for discussion.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so my comments would be, um, this is, this particular policy is something that should be included in our governance handbook. Uh.
Yes.
And to, and, um, develop whatever policies, um, or protocols, I should say, need to happen in the nuance of, of, of this, but, um, I, the reason why I say that this is the place where it needs to be, because it's, it's there, it's accessible. And, um, it's, when you talk about onboarding new people, it's also part of what people who are coming as potential candidates need to know as well, that it's a little bit more restrictive in where they live and what they anticipate they're gonna be doing over that next four years than what people might, um, have imagined.
And it's true. I agree with that.
Agreed. Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
In the spirit of, I don't know, feminism? I would also like to discuss the inclusion of a board maternity leave in this policy.
Okay.
That is good.
I can investigate that.
Can you say that again?
Well, with that.
Yeah.
I would.
But that's not just fill a vacancy.
This is a little different.
Yeah.
That would be in a different.
But there was, there was, there is stuff in here about a board member failing to, um, do their duties for three months. And I can imagine in the event of a pregnancy that, that complicated. Would take more than, with complications, that would take more than three months. The exclusion in the language is for sickness. And I would appreciate maybe it explicit that maybe not only for sickness, like pregnancy isn't a sickness, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay. I eh, I think there is a great idea eh, that this part is actually gonna go on the handbook because it's more accessible. But this also prompted eh, that, I mean, when we do master in governance, we do see a lot of the, or bylaws, which are very extensive eh, and a lot of them. But we don't see every, each of them, every, every law. And eh, so for that, we've been counting with eh, legal counseling. And I think few of those have been putting the question out about being out of state for long periods of time or for more than six months. And we've always been saying that we, we never got this particular thing. And I feel a little bit, it's a little bit awkward that, you know, right now it comes and say that a party with forty days out of state eh.
Sixty.
No.
Sixty.
Sixty days out of state eh, you are not supposed to. I mean, we could have fill up eh, the, or, you know, make that thing stop already eh, instead of keeping, before, keeping recurring this over and over and over. So eh, for that eh, I've been proposing that we get a committee insider board who is also helping review all this eh, and bringing back eh, more knowledge about this board laws. So this doesn't happen again, that we get caught eh, in doing something that our own laws and board laws are eh, made for. And, and eh, I mean, that was a little bit disappointing.
Yeah, so we discussed that in, um, packet review. The idea of having some, have the board have a discussion about, this is going off topic a little bit, um, about reviewing board bylaws and board policies. And I think what we agreed to do is discuss that at the next governance team development meeting. So we can certainly do that. And then I'll also remind board members that all of the bylaws are available to you, just like they're available to me. I look, we look in the same place. So, and if you ever have a question about anything, don't hesitate to ask me if you need me to go up the legal. Cuz I'm happy to do that. Cuz I, I often for these, I'm learning with you. So, but I like the idea that the board would be more active in the review of board policies. That is one of your primary functions. So I think a good discussion on that in two weeks makes sense.
Well, thank you. With that, we move to the next item, which will be eleven. And it's the consent agenda items. Any item? Oh, sorry.
So when are we bringing this back? Are we bringing this back? Does it make sense to bring this back in December? Is that what you're saying? For review and, review and discussion, this one or?
So this policy or bylaw, in December.
Well, this really would almost be more in January, it seems like, cuz that first meeting is more ceremonial.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So if you really wanna have discussion, we could do December, but.
It feels like hazing. Hazing is important.
To do it in December? That's, that's, yeah.
Well, they're gonna say in it then.
The only thing I would say is we may be,
You wanna say it, that's what you're saying?
If one of our board members, um, were to leave the board, um, we might be on a pretty tight timeline to have this bylaw in place.
So what if we put, what if we just put it in place now and then in our, make sure that we talk about it in January?
Yeah. Well, the problem is, is that we have two, we have the trustee area thing, right? And so the way, and also like I have, I have some questions around the language, around inhabiting versus residing. Because if you're res- residing implies residence and you can be a resident of someplace, but you can be inhabiting another place.
So we should do it at our November meeting then, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, we could do a review and discussion in November.
Yeah.
Right.
And then maybe perhaps approval on this.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're saying?
Cuz that would be, that's a good timeline. I mean, if that's, if we need it for, in case, well, if we know what.
It's up to you guys.
Yeah.
Well, I think we would, I mean, I think when we approve it and when we review it, don't be the same thing. So like, we could approve it in November right after the election.
Yeah.
And then like at our governance, when we have new board members,
Then discuss it.
we have a discussion about this policy, cuz it's an important policy for all board members to.
Okay.
And we could discuss it at the approval. We can just, yeah, like bring it back to review and approve, so we're ready to go.
That's what you're saying, not really wanna discuss.
I know.
Review and, review and approves.
Review and action.
Review and action in November, right?
Review and action in November, right?
It's like December after the election, but then we still discuss it with all the board members.
Right after. Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And next you.
Did you get that, Hesus?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
There are my notes.
Perfect.
Eh, then we move to item eleven, consent agenda item. So any item consent agenda is subject to review and discussion prior to being approved by the board. If necessary, any items may be removed for separate action. The public may address the board regarding any items on the consent agenda and also put any items. Eh, thank you. Oh, then and now, yeah, we need comments from the public or anyone eh, either online or here who would like to talk about the consent agenda items eleven. Okay, there are none. And four?
I'm with approval of the consent agenda as this does.
I'd like to pull eleven G just to chat about it for a second.
Okay, so we're gonna move eh, eleven G, so.
Is there a second? If there's not a second, then we don't have to, but I don't mind just chatting about it for a second.
Yeah, we can chat, so eh.
Well, I need to adjust my.
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
Aline, Aline, who does?
Yeah. Okay. So Aline, eh, second to pull that out. So we're gonna approve the eh, consent agenda items eh, with our G. And then we'll go back to that one, huh?
And wait, so, so Michelle.
So you.
Are you the manager?
She didn't make it because we were still asking if someone wanted to pull something. And so I said I wanted to pull while she was saying that, but I wanted to pull.
Okay.
You seconded. She's saying, does anyone?
Okay.
Okay, so I think now we can go to approve everything else and then we approve G. Isn't it that the procedure?
We can do that.
Yes. Okay. So eh, anyone eh, who wants to approve everything but G, please say aye. 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 Okay. Eh, anyone against? Okay, so eh, with that eh, we move to approve the consent agenda and consent G. And eh, we open discussion to that floor.
Okay, the only reason I wanted to bring up, uh, number G is, um, you know, not on behalf of any particular board member, but just the fact that all of our employees, I think as board members, we need to be sensitive, that all of our employees are constrained by, I don't know if it's actually our policy or if it's just, um, there's a blackout period when they can call in for, call in sick, right?
Don't worry.
Um, and so it's around holidays, it's before breaks and stuff. And so, um, you know, this, I had a couple people, um, talk to me about this and, um, it's because it's the last one before summer and, you know, are we holding ourselves as board members accountable, like we hold our employees accountable? Um, so I just wanted to talk about, like, you know, I think we had to talk about it before, where we, where we said we're not asking for doctor's notes and we're gonna trust each other in good faith, you know? But I just wanted to kind of open up the discussion about, um, you know, if we're doing the right thing, if we're missing board meeting, if we're gonna miss board meetings, like extending our own vacation, uh, or break, you know, or appearance thereof, um, around and get paid for it when we're expecting all of our teachers, all of our staff, all of our admins to be here when the first day is there. So I just, I just wanna.
So if I can just make, make one clarification, there's actually no constraint on employees using illness any day of their work.
Talk about, I mean. Yeah. I got it. Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So back to.
Personal necessi-, personal necessity, yes.
Talking.
But illness, if someone's sick, we don't compel them to come.
But do you, but do you ask them to bring in a doctor's note? Like, if, let's say, I mean, I think it's just, it's kind of like a practice. Like, if you, you ask for personal necessity and then you don't get it, cuz you're, and then you say like.
Oh, it's like three days or something, like if they missed three days?
Yeah, they. Okay.
No.
Okay.
I forget.
So this was the first point, had any, any, if there's a, a, any board members being questioned of a matter of appearance of extending the vacation?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so it's always been high level of trust. And it was me and I was ill. And if you would like to have a note, I'd be happy to do that.
I don't mean it. I don't mean it.
But it was something that was very last minute that I didn't expect. And I took my fault, I took my guidance from my personal physician and I should not have to have this discussion in public.
Well, we're just being asked to, it's on the agenda to approve.
I, I write, I, I.
So I'm just asking, and so we're responsible.
But if you want a different policy that if it's before vacation break, then that's what you need to be asking.
I'm, I'm asked, I'm just asking.
It's the only place where we can have it.
I'm just asking the, I'm just asking the question, so. But I'm happy.
Yeah.
I'm happy to vote on it if you'd like to vote on it. And I'm just saying that it's, um.
Um, I'm glad you raised that, uh, expectation we have of our employees. It's not something that I've thought about before and, um, it's just, I like having the information. And, um, I think it is, uh, and I'm glad that you clarified, Mike, that this is something that, uh, doesn't apply to cases of illness. And, um, I think it's something that we can keep in mind for the future.
Okay.
Okay, so with that eh, do we move to vote on?
I'm with approval of item eleven, eleven, right?
Eleven G.
Eleven G, yes. Eh, second? Who's second to approve eleven G?
I'll second.
Okay, eh, with that eh, can we vote on approving eleven G? Everybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
Ask if there's anyone else.
Okay, yeah?
You have to ask if anyone's voting no.
Okay, anyone who's voting no?
Sure, I'll vote no.
Okay. Yes, I want to, I think I'm gonna vote no this time because it's not the first time and we've been talking about this for, for years that I've been on the board.
Can I share a comment?
Yes.
Uh, this feels really disrespectful to, when it's on here and it says, cuz someone's illness, to then like not support it, like we're essentially saying, the message you guys are sending is that you don't trust your other board members. And that just feels really disrespectful.
Well, okay, so. Let me just say, like, I feel like it's not, I'm not trying, I'm not, I don't feel I'm being disrespectful because I feel like I'm, you know, it's, it's a cumulative, um, experience here and, um, I, you know, I am appreciative that, um, that Nancy has, Nancy, I'm appreciative that you have been present here in the district and, you know, attending all the board meetings, even when you were traveling, even when you were doing other things. I'm appreciative that since January that you have been here and, and engaged in, in doing things in the community. Um, but I just think that it's for, for the work outside of the boardroom that we do, I feel like we've still been, I feel like I've still been carrying some of the weight. And so I feel like it's pretty, um, I guess I feel like, you know, for the bare minimum of coming to a meeting, that that is, that that is, um, asking for reimbursement for that, for all the work that we do that is unpaid, that is, you know, even the thing at Ellis today, none of us got paid for that. We were all there and I'm appreciative of that. But, um, I just feel like in sum for the year, that I felt like it was not a great end to the year. So I, I just don't, I don't feel like it's disrespectful. I feel like it's just, um.
I, I think that this is a conversation that should have happened between you and I prior to the meeting.
Okay.
And it did not occur. Similarly with Isabel, if anybody had any questions, we should have come to me and had a discussion. I would not enter into personal comments about this because it's not professional.
It's, it's not, this is not personal.
And this, and this.
This is not personal, okay.
And I, I'm, I'm sharing mine.
Sure.
Sorry. Point. This is a better topic at a board, um, governance meeting because you're talking about policy and you're conflating policy with individual people. So I've, I'm gonna just finish this and I just don't think it's an appropriate time, place, or discussion for this particular thing. And I do not appreciate the process that unfolding right now.
So we're gonna table it for the next governance meeting when this eh, are not being recorded. Eh, although it needs to be an open session because otherwise it's gonna be a drama eh, it was on agenda and it's gonna be a round and violation. But we're gonna talk to it in open meeting during the governance meeting, which is, eh, happens in this room in eh, two weeks. Eh, and treat it as a, as a matter of governance and as a policy within our team. Is that, um, is that something?
Are you saying that you wanna bring back item eleven G at another time, or do you wanna?
Because the policy is different.
For, for the next week.
Yes.
It's different than this particular.
For next meeting.
For the next.
Wanna bring up this agenda item, the possibility of approving it?
And on eleven, yeah, on the governance meeting, so we can talk about it.
We've already voted, right?
We've already.
We've already voted and we're deadlocked, right?
Yeah.
What do we do with it now?
If you don't have a majority, it doesn't pass.
Okay, so it doesn't pass.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I don't think we need to bring it back.
Eh, so there, there is a problem that we need to talk, if we're gonna talk with more than two people and whoever does the review is gonna be. Eh, so there, there is a problem that we need to talk, if we're gonna talk with more than two people and whoever talks, we use gonna be two people already eh. As a, as an added item and it cannot be a brown act violation. But I think that probably it was going on is that. It's not a new thing, it's something that's been coming up. We do trust each other and last year when something like that happened. I was the first to say, eh, we need to trust each other. We cannot ask question, if somebody says something, we should do it and eh, eh. Might remind me that that's exactly, it was three years ago when I say the first time, like, yeah, we should, I mean, not even question about it. But it's, it's just not, that is not the first time, but I think that, you know, this excuses like we have a bylaw. But it's adjacent, it's not the same, but by law, we are supposed to be going to the wellness. Meeting somebody and nobody has been showing up this year and that's like the only law.
We're going out the topic right now.
But yeah, the likely, it is cumulative and then when it's cumulative, we start distrusting each other. So I think that's all together.
And I mean, for, just for the record, like, is not disrespectful to pull something from consent and say, hey, I have a concern about this. We all voted, we just didn't agree. It's not disrespectful, it's, that's why it's on this and it's, it's approval of money. And we can talk about policy and we can talk about team dynamics in our governance meeting where that belongs and I'm happy to do that and I'm happy to. You know, work through whatever we need to work through. It's not meant to be, uh. It's not meant to be a personal attack, it's just a matter of like this particular item. So.
Well, with that, I think we need to move to the next item and I think if we can bring this.
We can talk about how we can.
Another agenda, how we can bring it to another agenda. Eh, and with that, we are going to, well, it's already item twelve. Which is information agenda. Eh, we don't normally eh, have any presentation about it. And then we're gonna move to item thirteen, which is eh, future meetings and adjournment, adjournment. Eh, the next one will be on August twenty second at six P M. Right here, it's gonna be eh, well, it's a regular board meeting, but it's gonna be a. A governance meeting. Seven fifteen. Wow.
That's pretty fast.
That was rough.
It was pretty quick.
Thank you, Dustin. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, that's.
About me doing it.